I need to order, if you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Vock, the attendance, please.
Mr. Fletcher?
Here.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Mrs. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mayor Winger?
Present. We have a goal of completing this before lunch if we can. If we don't, we will press on into the lunch hour. We will not be taking a lunch break. And this is a quasi judicial hearing. It's to discuss the impact, impasse between the City of Vero Beach and Teamsters Local Union Number 769. With that said and done, we have to disclose, Tammy, can you do that, please? Any ex-party communications?
I have a disclosure. I approached Ms. Vock yesterday to ask her why Articles 15, 17, and 18 in both contracts were missing a signature for the proposed or the tentatively agreed to.
Does anyone else have anything to disclose? All right, seen none. Our first position is management position or the...
No, sir.
And you'll be starting with the blue collar with Local Union 769, the impasse with the blue collar section. And you would start with the city position, and then the union bargaining agent would state their position.
Mr. Mayor? With Ms. Graves' disclosure, could I just ask what the response was that she received from Ms. Vock in that question?
Absolutely. Yes, I called the Human Resource Director, and she did talk to Mr. Odom about that.
Is that an answer?
Mr. Odom, I think you said you do have the, you have the signed ones.
I do, and it's, there were mounds of paper flying around, and we're making, we're signing the table, we're making copies for Mr. Myers and other members sitting in our team. I'm looking at my fully signed, why you didn't have one, and it just aired.
Okay, thank you.
Jason, you...
We would stipulate that all of the articles except for Article 20 was signed intentively agreed to.
Okay, thank you.
Might want to bring a microphone around and push the green button, any one of those who do it. I have a procedure question, Wayne and Tammy, but we have actually two agreements. Are we going to do this twice, or how does that work?
Yes, we need to do separate contract discussion.
Okay, so we are dealing at this point with the blue collar, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, Mr. Odom, I believe that brings you forward with management's position on that.
Okay, yes, sir. Again, just for background, Jason Odom of Gold Cook C. Fennell, and I'm the city management representative. And the impasse process, and I understand that the council has not gone through an impasse process in quite some time, and certainly probably none of the member, current members have gone through an impasse process before. So I wanted to give you just a little bit of background so that you understood kind of where we are and how we got to where we are today. We started negotiations with Teamsters, the blue collar unit and the clerical and technical unit, back in June of 2013. As you know, the blue collar unit already had an existing contract, actually so did CT at the time. Over the course of numerous negotiation sessions, we were able to reach tentative agreement on all articles except for one, which was the wage article. Just a few highlights of what most, some of those tentative agreed to articles are. We addressed, and the management rights article, and by the way, before I go too further, you do have binders up there with you? Okay. The tabs are labeled, they're self-explanatory. One is the existing contract, the tentative agreed to contract, the union's last proposal, C.'s last proposal, and then some financials so you can understand the numbers that we're going to be talking about in a moment. We also addressed issues involving layoff and transfer and promotion. We addressed annual leave in terms of creating a frozen leave bank for annual leave as well as for sick leave. We addressed holidays in terms of substitute holidays and adjusting however time is paid, as well as losing one holiday, which was the Good Friday holiday. We addressed the issue of insurance in Article 23, which is the elimination of the high plan in, no, I'm sorry, in October of this year, 2014. And then we adjusted also at that time going forward how the city contributes towards employee health insurance. Article 24, a significant change in the retirement plan effective this, October of this year, the defined benefit plan, the general employee retirement benefit plan would be frozen and replace with a defined contribution plan through the Southern State Savings, Savings and Loan Institution. The city would contribute 7% towards that plan. The employee would contribute 3%, except for employees hired after October this year who would contribute 5%. And then the duration of that deal would be a two-year deal. So we've reached, I think, probably milestones in terms of what we've been able to work together between the union through their agent, Mr. Myers, and myself, and the city's bargaining team to reach agreement on everything except for wages. Article 20 is the wage proposal, and if you look in your tab book, you'll see city's last proposal, and it's broken down there. You see the Articles 2001, 02, and 03, and I'm going to talk about those individually so you understand what currently is the case and what the city is proposing. You also, I believe, should have, or do you have, Mr. Comet, do they have the, this, the impasse, okay, do you have this, the impasse resolution hearing?
Procedure, yes.
If you look down there under the section called Articles at Impasse requiring Determination Resolution by Council, you'll see each section is broken down for you. You will be required to vote on each one because there is a proposal from the city, then a corresponding proposal from the union on each article, each subarticle, if you will. The first one is Article 20.02, which is just titled General Wage Increase. As the council knows, there, I believe it's 2009 was the last time there has been a general wage increase. I believe the longevity pay plan, also referred to as a step plan, has been frozen since that time. And it has been a difficult time, we recognize that, for the city employees. And I can tell you, just to get it out of the way, this, from the city management perspective, we 100% and fully agree that these employees deserve an increase in pay. There's not any dispute about that. What we tried to do is give you those numbers so that you understand, you know, what the cost is of that, not just for the rest of the current fiscal year, but also going forward. So the last city proposal to the Teamsters Union was a 2.5% general wage increase. And what makes you understand what that meant? That meant retroactive, okay, to this fiscal year, October 1 of 2013 going forward, okay? And if you look at that tab called Salary Proposals, and it may be easier if you just keep that impasse resolution document in front of you, and then in your binder, go to that last tab called Salary Scenarios. We tried the best we can to kind of foresee what we thought might be the union proposal, knowing what it was, and then graded it from 2.5% all the way to 5%. For some reason, the 2.5% is the last document in your binder, and we did it two ways so that you would have the benefit of knowing what does X percent cost from today going forward, and what would that same percent cost if you went retroactive, okay? So as I said, the city's last proposal was 2.5% increase, and that was retroactive to October 1, 2013. And if you look at the document, each one of those, and they look like this here, and they have, at the top, you'll see Budget Impact by Fund, Salary Increases. The first page for each percent should say retroactive to October 1, 2013. The next page will be the same exact percent increase, but March 1, 2014. At the time, we weren't sure kind of when this was going to take place, so we had to pick a date. We thought March 1 would be probably the most realistic date to use going forward. And so let's just look at the 2.5% retroactive to October 1, and it's broken down for you by general fund. And as the council knows, at the beginning at least, there was a $227,000 proximate unappropriated surplus, okay? As you know, we've already resolved the impasse with the police officer unit. That's why you see under the line for general fund, PBA rank and file, you see that $64,000 number? That is what the cost was of the PBA pay increase, okay? That $64,000 comes off of obviously that $227,000 surplus fund. So, and this also includes no estimations of overtime, et cetera, okay? So if you look under Teamsters, you'll see the 100, the number in red, it should be in red, $107,239. That would be the cost if you went back to October 1, 2013 forward, okay? That would be the cost, and you see it, what it totals up to. Not, and then the next column is non-bargaining unit employees. So if, we wanted you just to have all these numbers. So if the council did the same thing for non-bargaining unit numbers, we wanted you to know what that would cost, and then it's just simple math. Totals up to 210, you see then what the net effect is to that on the unappropriated surplus. If you turn the page, you'll see what it is if you started that March 1, 2014, and then went forward to the end of the fiscal year. Obviously, it's a much lower number, and you can see the math, how that affects the unappropriated surplus fund. However, let me just make one point before I go to the next one. That 2.5%, if you're going to want to know what that cost would be for then the next fiscal year, because remember, this doesn't, it doesn't stop at the end of fiscal year, then we take it back. It goes to next year. Look at the retroactive one, that would tell you then what that cost is going forward for 2014, 2015, okay? The next one is what a 3% increase would mean retroactive and then going forward. And then we broke it down, 3 and 1/4, you know, 3 and 1/2, so that, I mean, obviously, the city management side will respect whatever decision council comes to in its collective wisdom. I thought it'd be beneficial to you that you would have these numbers going up to the union proposal of 5% so you can see what the difference is between 2 and 1/2, 3, 3 to 4, and 5, and so forth. What is the city's management's position? Our position is this. We believe that a 2.5% retroactive or a 3% prospective would be an appropriate wage increase for the Teamsters Blue Collar Unit. It'd be the same for the CT, but we're staying on task here with the Teamsters Blue Collar, okay? Anybody have any questions on that before I just go to the next article? Okay. Article 2003 is wage differential. The city's position is not to change that. And that's based on employees working on different shifts. If you look at the city's last proposal, Article 2003, you'll see an A, B, C, and a D, and you'll see, you know, if you're working on second shift, and it defines that, there's an extra dollar an hour. If you're working a third shift, it defines that, it's a $1.25. And you'll see, I'll let Mr. Myers speak for his own proposal, I don't want to explain it for him, but he'll explain it to you in detail. But the wage differential would be the union's request to adjust those numbers, and the city's position is to leave those status quo. 20.04 is call-out pay, and that's, and you can see it's self-explanatory, that's when employees are called out under certain circumstances, and it defines that pretty clearly in agreement in A, B, C, and D. And the city's position is to leave that as status quo. There's also a shift differential, and the city's position is to leave that status quo. So just to kind of, if I can just recap it, it would be the city's position is a 2.5% retroactive or 3% going forward. And you can see in our last tab what the budget impact is for each of those items, okay? So if anybody have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, then...
Mr. Myers?
Formal good morning to you, Mayor, council members. My name is Steve Myers, I'm the business agent with Teamsters Local 769. We're obviously at the legislative process of the impasse, which means we're unable to work things out. Just so you know, as a matter of fact, Teamsters Local 769, at the time we filed for impasse, the city, city's wage proposal was zero. After we filed for impasse, the city wanted to meet with us one more time and had, on December the 8th of 2013, had modified their proposal to a 2.5% increase. What the city's proposal failed to do was to, with respect to the blue collar unit, was to address any of the inequities that currently exist with longevity step pay. The employees have, the parties have negotiated as part of the collective party agreement that's in Schedule A of the, of the pay plan. Step increases based on longevity for three years, five years, seven years, nine years, 10 years, 15 years, and 20 years of employment. Since 2000, fiscal year 2008, 2009, the city employees have not received a step increase in accordance with the contract. Those were frozen. So what that means is, is that employees that may have been here for eight years at the time, five years have passed, are now, you know, three or four years behind on the, or three steps behind on their, on their step plan, which other employees that have the same type of longevity would have already been, are already at that level. So we need to fix the inequities, the city's proposal failed to do that. There's obviously a cost associated with, with that increase. I think it's somewhere along the lines of, just for the, the pay incentive for the bargaining units of bringing them up to the appropriate step is somewhere in the neighborhood of approximately $53,000 annually, which I believe is less than half of a percent annually also with bargaining unit payroll. So we believe those inequities need to be, need to be fixed. Along with the, and if you look in the tentative agreements that the parties have already signed off on, one of the tentative agreements that we signed off on was the duration of agreement, which is Article 30 of the collective bargaining agreement. And in the duration of agreement, the parties have agreed to two-year, a two-year contract. So the Teamsters have a proposal which incorporates wage increases for the next two years. So you'll see that the 5% proposal, along with making sure that each employee is at the appropriate longevity step, is a part of our proposal. We also have a proposal with respect to water and wastewater plant operators, that those water and wastewater plant operators, you'll probably remember several years back, there was a study done, and as part of the study, the, they're looking for consolidation of jobs within water and sewer, and they've done that. And the employees are now being dual certified as water plant operators, or being cross-trained and being certified as wastewater plant operators, and vice versa. Wastewater plant operators have been cross-trained as water plant operators. But what, what failed to happen at the time that the employees were being required to cross-train is any, any pay for receiving the additional state license. These are state licenses that the employees are required to take a test and pass, and you have to have so many, so much time in to be able to take the test, and the city has failed to offer any compensation for the license. So we have a proposal, and the city has failed to even address the proposal with respect, with respect to a counterproposal. With respect to the shift differential, the union is prepared at this time to withdraw our proposal on the, on C, 20.04, I believe it is. And our proposal on 20.05, which one do you have them numbered as? Right. And the union's proposal on 20.05 is status quo. So if you adopt the union's position, you would be granting a 5% increase for fiscal year 2013, 14, along with making sure that the employees are on the appropriate longevity step for 14, for 13, 14. In addition, you would be granting a 5% increase for fiscal year 2014, 2015, along with making sure the employees are on the appropriate longevity step. In addition, you'd be granting a $2 per hour incentive pay for employees that become dual certified as either water or wastewater plant operators.
Mr. Turner, you want to ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Turner, I just wanted to clarify something, Mr. Turner, just to make sure I'm understanding that, the proposal. So what I'm seeing is 5% increase for this year, next year, plus step increases this year and next year, and adding up to approximately an overall 12% increase, assuming that a step increase is a 1%, if your numbers calculate to a 1% change. So the union's asking for an overall 12% increase.
I think it would be 11%, but...
Well, if you're asking for step increase in each year, I would think you'd have to step it up, yeah. You would take that 1% within each year.
I believe it's only half a percent, but I think it's...
Well, in the absence of any number.
Absolutely, go ahead, Jason.
The, and just so that you're referencing, I want you to be able to try to make it easy for you, if you're referencing your impasse resolution hearing document, when Mr. Myers was referring to that wastewater, the dual certification, and their proposal to $2 increase for those folks, that's part of 20.03, okay? So 20.03, that's that wastewater proposal, and so if you look at the union's last proposal, that's where that's coming from. The cost of the longevity, I think you're used to, like, the police, they call it a step increase, and this contract is called the longevity. The cost, and I believe you're given a figure of $53,000 to fix that, it's a little bit more than that. It's actually, the general fund cost of that is $43,000. The enterprise fund cost to that is $69,000. It adds up $112,000 and some change. I'm just giving you whole numbers, okay? So the longevity to bring everybody up to current day, longevity, would cost $112,000, okay? And then the last thing I just would want to clarify is, and Mr. Myers made a good point to clarify, make sure that you understood, their proposal was this current fiscal year and next fiscal year because of the two-year. The city's is pertaining to this fiscal year, and then to reopen it in a next fiscal year at that time and address it then, okay?
Are there questions?
Mr. Myers?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for being here. So you said that the union is pulling 20.04?
Correct.
Okay.
And 5.
And 5. 5 states status quo.
20.04 and 20.05, you can, you can scratch out on your...
Our proposal is that the language remains status quo.
Okay.
Mr. Turner, I have one more question. In regarding the water and sewer plant premium at the $2?
Yes.
Obviously, that $2 would apply to all hours worked by water and sewer, including overtime. I'm looking at, at least on a monthly basis, that's $380 additional pay. Why was it not considered to do a, just a lump sum pay per, premium per pay period as we do with the lifeguards that are double-qualified?
Well, and I want you to keep in mind the context of when we made our proposal. Our opening proposal with regard to this issue was $2, going back to July of 2013. And with all due respect to Jason and his team, you know, you reach a point to where if you're proposing $2 and the other side is proposing 0, and you're proposing $2 and they're proposing 0, if you keep going down and they're staying the same, then you're negotiating with yourself. So I'm not in the business of negotiating with myself, I'd like to negotiate with the other party. So if I would have found some type of movement from the other side, then we would have, we probably would not be at $2 right now. But when you start at $2 and they're at 0, and you stay at 2 and they're at 0, eventually you're going to stay at 2. So that's, that was an opening proposal. Obviously, you know, this board, you know, has the authority to, to modify that as they see fit, and we would, you know, if $1 is the number, then $1 is the number. If putting it into an hourly rate of, you know, 53 cents an hour is the number, then then that's the number also. We've done that in other, in other areas.
Thank you.
And that's a fair comment. The city's position, as you mentioned, was not to adjust any, any of those.
Thank you.
Mr. Comet, I have a question before we move on to forward deliberation and vote. Well, is there public comment allowed in this process?
No, sir, this is quasi judicial, it's only the parties before you.
I would guess that when we're moving on to deliberation and vote, and I'll read this standard review, because I think it's important. Pursuant to Section 447, that .403, Florida statutes, after hearing the matter of the city council, shall take such action as it deems to be in the public interest, including the interest of the public employees involved, to resolve all disputed impasse issues. I think we're at the point now for the council to discuss. Mrs. Turner, you...
I was just going to say...
Well, what we've got to come to is, we have to come to, firstly, I'll make one comment for myself, and that is, I prefer the city's position of a one-year position, and that we come back and reopen that. That, that would be something I would lay on the table to start with. I, Ms. Graves, Mr. Fletcher, I don't know.
I agree with you, Mayor.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, I just have a couple of questions. I know that the unions agreed to the defined contribution. Was there a savings that the city's going to realize from that plan?
From the defined contribution?
Right, the switching over.
I don't know what the cost is of the switch over, but I, I mean, I'm going to go on a limb here, but I want to be, if somebody else has better information, that there would...
I think having Cindy address that, because she's done a lot of...
I'd be better with, yeah, she's been more involved in that type of...
But just as a concept, going from the defined benefit to defined contribution reduces risk in the future more than reduces cost in the present. But Cindy, if you have any information to that.
And at this point, since Cindy actually is kind of like a witness, unless the parties want to waive it, typically we would swear in witnesses. Just swear in and remove the question.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do, if I can remember which hand is my right. As we've discussed before, switching from the defined benefit to the defined contribution, there's two components to our contribution to the defined benefit plan. The very much smaller of the two pieces of that, of about $3.5 million a year citywide, is our normal contribution, our percentage of payroll, which is around 3 and 1/2%, 3.25. The much larger portion of what we're contributing right now is our payment toward the underfunded liability. And the idea behind switching from a defined benefit to a defined contribution is that portion of our payment, as we begin to resolve that gap, becomes much smaller, and that's the real potential savings down the line. At this point in time, as our liability continues to grow, unless our investments keep pace, that gap stays there, in some cases even grows a little bit, and that very large contribution toward that gap remains something that will happen into the, you know, it's amortized over 20 years, but remains there for the foreseeable future, where we switch and shift the risk, as the manager rightly pointed out, we stop that growth of that, of that gap, and that's where the real savings will come down the line.
But we, at this time, we don't have any quantifiable answers to that question.
The answer is actually with the, with the percentage that we've proposed, our normal contribution will actually go up a slight bit, but each year, as we get the actuarial evaluation on the basis of a frozen plan, that's where, we can't say what that will be three years from now because there are many other factors, but that's where we've, we've basically said, this much liability and no more. And then from that point forward, all we're doing is closing the gap. And again, you know, out of the $3.5 million a year that we contribute, for instance, a million plus in the general fund, almost a million of it is that underfunded liability. That's where the real savings comes in down the road, but I can't put a number on it between now and the 10-year limit.
Mr.?
Sorry, I'm sorry, so, yeah.
Excuse me, I have a frog in my throat.
That's okay, I understand. So our, currently, our plan requires a 3.25 contribution, and then we do the...
Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, yes, on behalf of the employee.
Yes, and in this proposed defined contribution, we are going to a 7% contribution from the city.
Correct.
I understand it's a diminishment of risk, but I think, yeah, we are more than, doubling our current contribution theoretically.
Yeah, and I can give you some numbers to go with that if you want, they're over there, but you know, just in flat terms, it's not, it's not as big as that, that $1 million, for instance, in the general fund gap between the regular contribution and the unfunded liability.
Where did we come up with the 7% city contribution to this plan? Where is that number from?
Through the process of negotiation, but also, we did a good comparison against some information that was provided to us by the Florida League of Cities for many, many of our, you know, peer cities that have defined contribution plans and... of our, you know, peer cities that have defined contribution plans, and from our perspective, we look like we're kind of right down the middle with some ranging as high as 10 and 11 employee contributions, some as low as 3 and 4. And Jim, I'm sorry, did you want to address that?
Yes, and again, it is a negotiated, negotiated number, but based on the cities that we looked at, and also what our actuary told us, that in order to try to make the employee hold it at the end of the day, you need to get close to that 12% number. And so we felt like that for future employees, we will get there, for existing employees, that 2% gap, they still have the right to make those contributions if they choose to do so, but they also will have benefits from the frozen plan going forward, so it's not like they'd be at 0.
I personally, I think it's well thought out, that part, and it's been well negotiated, and I think we should leave it alone. I mean, I think it's a good question for the public to understand, but...
That's it, I think we just, yeah, just need to get the information.
And I thank you for doing that, and Mr. Kramer also.
Well, the other thing is, I do agree with the year, let's just put this out another year. You know, one of the reasons that we did a lot of these, these cuts on the, on the union contracts is because the economy kind of took a nosedive, and everybody kind of took a hit on this. My understanding is that the economy's coming back a little bit, the property values will be coming back. Before I make a long-term type of decision on this, I'd really like to know, you know, just what our taxes are going to be like this summer when we do the budgeting. I just, I would hate to make that decision right now to see where we're at, you know, and make a guess, but I'd just like to push that off until we see what our tax base is going to do in budgeting.
And I just want to clarify one thing, just so we don't get lost in all these numbers, since we've had some things withdrawn. The only council will be voting on two things. Number one, your first vote will be, what is the amount of the percentage increase, wage increase, and whether it's retro or going forward? And number two, whether you're going to give a wage increase for folks who are dual certified.
Well, dealing with, dealing with the first issue, I think the consensus seems to be that it's going to be forward, not retroactive, Jason and Steve. If you have comment in that, it's just, to me, cleaner.
No, just to comment on what, how Jason characterized, I mean, the numbering, our numbering, the numbering got a little jumbled on, I think, the city's proposal, so Jason was just trying to clarify, but in trying to clarify, I think he, I just want to make sure that the union still has on the table and fully believes there should be some type of fixing the inequities within the longevity step plan, so that's still a part of our proposal. When he just stated it, he said it should be either 2.5% going backwards or 3% going forward, and we believe it should be whatever it is as a percentage, but don't, don't leave out the longevity piece of it also.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes, sir, I believe Jason has really made our position aware, and if you do take the going forward from this point, we would recommend the 3% increase at that, under that stage. The, we feel like that it's a very good contract, having a wage opener, and the second year is good. I think Mr. Kramer's point on where we are in our assessed value, and what our tax rates are going to be going in that direction, I think would help come to a much, a much better agreement at that point.
And Mr. O'Connor, what about the longevity plan?
Well, I have some problems with the longevity plan. Number one, when you take a longevity plan that has been out of use for so long, I think it needs a lot more study than just trying to catch everybody up to a step. It also has some major cost that we're still debating, and I believe Jason and the union both have seen two different numbers there, but I think it has an impact of cost. If we want to get back into the step program, then I think we need to take a very long look at what we have and try to modernize what we have. I personally am not in favor of a step program. A person who is providing the service, doing the job, if they're qualified to do the job and doing the work, whether he's been here three years or been here 15 years, in my opinion, should be paid the same wage. I have a real issue that we are automatically, just because you've been around for so many years, that you have a differential in pay. Obviously, that is not where, where the union is at this particular point, but that's philosophically where I am. But if the council wishes to look at the step program, we could take that under consideration when we go into the wage considerations next year.
Well, I mean, I think we have to look at how we hold on to qualified employees and employee retention. If there's no, if there's absolutely no upward incentives, then how do we retain employees?
I think that is the base pay issue. How do you recruit and retain is going to be your base pay, it's not necessarily. And then upward mobility means positions that may come available within the organization, and we do recruitment internally before we go out externally.
I will say, this part of our department's appraisals as well, I think that that certainly provides information and opportunity.
That's correct, and that is shared with the various department heads whenever someone applies outside of that department.
If I may, could you, could you please, we have in front of us a number of these scenarios. Which, which one of these pages are the ones that you're recommending? The one that's 2.5%. October, it's the last two pages of this grant. Last two pages are which? The last two pages, the same, is that the 2.5% one? Across, just across the top, all 2.5%, October 1st, 2013? Yes, sir, and then the next page should be, just to go to March 1st, 2014? Correct. Okay, and then unfortunately, go to the first page of that document, of that tab, and you'll see the 3% part.
Mr. O'Connor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the management recommendation for a 2.5% general rate wage increase effective March 2014, as presented in the last page of this document.
Just, just for clarification, we are recommending 3% if you take March the 1st, 2.5% if you make it retroactive.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'll look at 3.
Do I hear a second? Not hearing a second, we'll have further discussion. Mr. Kramer? Mr. Fletcher?
I'm in favor of the 3% paid forward for the one year, so we'll have a better picture of what's going to happen in the following years.
So do you want to make that a second, or Mrs. Turner?
I make that a motion.
A big pardon?
No, it's a different motion.
That's a different motion. She had 2.5% as of March, I'm doing 3% as of March.
All right. I'll second. Discussion of that.
Just for clarification, and we're looking at a total budget impact of that of $170,000, correct? Am I looking at the right...
Yes, ma'am, that would be, that includes the PBA as well.
Yes. Thank you.
You're correct.
So... Could I comment before you vote, real quick?
Absolutely.
I think if you're making a motion in a second, I think it also needs to give instruction to what the parties will do for the second year of the agreement with respect to this section of the contract.
I think the idea is that we wanted to leave it open and see what...
That was the whole idea.
...transpires.
Yeah.
We wanted to wait until budget, so we'd have a better handle on what we're going to see.
If the council wishes, we will address the step and discuss the step process with the Teamsters and...
Yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good idea.
Not, not just with the step, but I think there has to be, for clarity on the parties moving forward. If, if the contract was ratified by the parties, there has, has to be given language that dictates what will happen for fiscal year 2014, 2015 with respect to wages. If there's no clarity, then the city could then take the position that the wages aren't open for 2014, 15. So if, if what I'm, if the city's giving, just giving direction right now for 2013, 14, and then they're going to give direction for 2014, 15, maybe I'm off-base by making this comment, but if, if not, then I think the, the two things need to be addressed in concert with each other.
I can resolve it then. 20.02B of the city's proposal was that the parties agreed to meet, to negotiate general wage and/or longevity increases for 2014, 2015, no later than June 14th of this year. So it's a re-opener that requires us to come back to the table and discuss what wages would look like for the next fiscal year.
In June of 2014?
Right.
Begin the discussion.
But to begin the discussion for what the next fiscal year would be.
Okay, when, when do we get our, our tax notice from Nolte's office?
Late June.
Late June? Okay.
But we won't set a military till...
Yeah, September.
Do we need to restate what the motion is second, or...
I think it needs to be amended to include that clause, Mr. Mayor.
Do you...
I'll still amend it.
All right. I still think we need to read it so we know what it says. Mrs. Vok, can you do that? Or does it need to be restated?
Mr. Fletcher made a motion in favor of the 3% as of March for a one-year, and the negotiations will be opened again as of June 14th for discussion for 2014, 2015.
But for clarification, the year ends October, September 30th, right?
Yes.
So it's not really a full year?
Understand.
Okay.
Any further comment, Mr. Oldham or Mr. Myers?
Nothing further from the union.
All right, we have a motion second. I'll call the motion, and Mrs. Vok, would you like to call a roll, please?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Miss Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Pass this 4 to 1.
All right, the second part of this, in regard to the blue collar, is the waste plant operator that becomes dual certified. Mr. O'Connor, do you have a position on this?
We don't, because we have not figured that into our financial model. We do agree in, in theory with the Teamsters that there should be a wage adjustment. I think $2 an hour is excessive, in my personal opinion, but I think that is something, and we have, as indicated by both parties, headed in that direction. Just also for clarification, it is very true that the employee has to dedicate the time and the ability to pass these exams, but the city actually provides the pay and pays for the, the courses that they're taking, so it's not something we are imposing on the employee, and they have to go out and get that independently on their own. And then we also provide them the work spot in which they can do the training in order to meet those qualifications. So at this particular time, we have not put anything in there for that differential.
Well, Mr. O'Connor, if I suggested a number, would I be out of order?
No, sir, absolutely not.
$1.
Once again, I'd still like to consider suggesting, looking at it as being a premium per pay period and not an hourly basis, because that will be applied to overtime, to vacation, to everything, so...
Mr. O'Connor, if I may, did you just state that the, that the employees do not incur any additional expense to be cross-trained in these licensing issues?
No, we provide, we pay for the courses, and we pay for the, the training time and the facilities in which they're trained.
Is there any added expense to the employees to have this done?
Traveling to and from to a site for wherever the courses would be.
But don't we compensate them for that travel time and...
Yes, we do.
Okay, so they're fully compensated for cross-training?
Mr., Miss Graves, your comment?
I think if we were talking about not rewarding employees for just staying in the job, but rewarding employees for dedicating extra service, the $1 would do that.
Mr. Fletcher?
I'm, I'm supporting Mr. O'Connor's position. I don't think we need to increase anything. I think they're, they're receiving additional training, and they have more options for, to market their abilities somewhere through the city of the reach, paying for that.
And once again, being dual certified in water and sewer is the common thing now. I mean, we had a staff that was twice the amount of people that normally would be running in a water and sewer, and the dual qualification gets us back to the industry norm.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, you know, it's interesting that the reason that they're being asked to be dual qualified is because we reduced staff, and we saw a benefit and a savings from it. It is, it does make their job more difficult, and we obviously already received a benefit from it. It, it's an interesting position for me, I think they probably do deserve something. Their, their job is more stressful, more demanding because of it, and we already did receive a benefit from it. I don't know quantifiably what the exact benefit is of it, but I don't have a problem giving them something for, for the added strains of the job.
What's the something you want to give them, or Mr. Oldham?
I just, I feel like maybe we're talking about something in a vacuum without any maybe context, just so you can see what the current pay, per pay period incentive is for lifeguard and EMT. The lifeguard, it's 52, or EMT incentive is $52 per pay period. Pool, fountain, beach is $80 per pay period.
What's that per hour?
$1.
Just so you can see the context of what it is, lifeguard, EMTs, beach versus pool, obviously beach being more dangerous, you know.
Well, I, I will make a motion that this be resolved at $1 for dual certified. I think Mr. Kramer, that's the motion, I think Mr. Kramer is correct. I think Miss Graves is correct, and I think we, the city has received a benefit.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Vok, would you call a roll?
Mr. Fletcher?
No.
Miss Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Pass this 3 to 2.
Does this resolve this particular, the blue collar portion, or where do we go from here, please?
We need to listen to either Jason or Steve.
We're both in agreement that that resolves the blue collar legislative issue.
City agrees, there are no more issues at impasse between the city and Teamster's blue collar unit.
All right, so that will move us forward in the same procedure, onto the technical and clerical portion. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the first thing we'll do, we've already set the ground rules, so I suppose it's the management position, Jason, is that correct? This is a little bit arcane, we've never done this in the last several years, so...
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The clerical and technical unit is a separate unit within the city, represented by the same Teamsters unit. You have in your separate binder for the clerical and technical unit, their existing contract, the tentative agreed-to contract, the city's last proposal and the union's last proposal. I won't go through the, you know, the highlights of the tentative agreed-to contract, because it is relatively the same as the one that I already went through, so I won't waste your time going through, going through that portion there. The, and so I'll just go right to the, your cheat sheet that you have for impasse resolution for the clerical and technical unit. In the 20.01, which is the general wage increase, the city's position is the same. I won't belabor to explain it anymore to you, it's 2.5% retro, 3% going forward. For shift differential, the city did not propose any changes to shift differential, the city did not propose any change to call-out pay, the city did not propose any change to standby pay. So essentially, the city's recommendation is status quo, except for the general wage increase, 2.5 retro, 3 going forward. There is an additional issue, and before I go there, and also to not make any change to longevity pay or step pay or anything of that sort. There is one additional issue that is in the clerical and technical unit that is not in the Teamster blue collar unit, and that is employees who are employed in various positions, call-takers, communication officer, customer service representatives. Just a little bit of background, is that those positions existed prior to this unit becoming certified, there was call-taker 1, or customer service rep, trainee, senior customer service rep, various positions. They each, as you can imagine, carried a different pay step, so as you went up, this, let's just admit, you know, call-taker 1 to 2, obviously that was a higher pay grade. When the prior city manager, Mr. Gabbard, considered those to be part of a step plan, and so when step plans were frozen, those folks, although may have been put into a call-taker 2 position, did not receive what was a call-taker 2 pay. And I'm just using call-taker just to make the example simpler, okay? So that is part of the union's proposal as well, and so I wanted to give you what those numbers were. And so what the union proposal would be to do is to, those folks who are, say, for example, call-taker 2, they would be paid the call-taker 2 pay from this point going forward, okay? going forward, okay? So the cost to the general fund for that is $9,422.40. The cost for that to the electric utility is $33,423. So, you know, approximately, you know, $44,000 would be the cost to put those folks on the pay scale for the position that they are currently holding, okay? And the, the city's position on that, at least as of prior to coming here today, was to delete that status quo and address that embargaining. Obviously, you know, the same with the wastewater treatment that the council voted on. You know, the city will buy, buy and respect whatever decision council makes. I just wanted you to have the benefit of what that cost was if you decide to do that from this point going forward. So in summation, general wage increase for the city, 2.5 retroactive or 3% going forward. Then the second issue is the bring in the, I guess under the umbrella, we might call them dispatch or customer service to their current position on that, on that pay plan.
And it's the city's recommendation, we do that?
The city's recommendation prior to coming in was to leave its status quo and address it in bargaining, the same as the wastewater dual certification pay issue.
What about, are there any employees, hourly employees that are not covered by a union unit?
I'm sorry?
Are there any hourly employees not covered by a union unit?
Yes, there are, and we do, and that would be something we would bring up afterwards, that we would make those adjustments as well, and we figured those into our cost.
So presumably, the implication of that is that doesn't happen in the quasi-judicial hearing. You'll bring it up later?
Well, actually, we, after you finish with, with the union contract, we make that recommendation to the council, whatever you do in this, these hearings, we would recommend that it apply to those. They're a relatively small number of people.
And that would happen today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the union's position with respect to the wages were the same for fiscal year 2013, 14, with the 5% and the longevity step. And as Jason spoke to, the, the issue of the, making sure that the employees are appropriately classified is, is a, is a real issue for us, and Jason mentioned that we would address it in bargaining. Well, we were in bargaining for seven months, and it hasn't been addressed yet. We need to address it. We have employees that are call-taker twos that are being paid as, or communication officer twos that are being paid as call-takers. We have people that are master communication officers that are being paid as communication officers. The employees need to be paid for the position that they're actually performing the work in. And the same thing within the customer service side, on the electric utility, you have employees that aren't receiving their automatic step adjustments for their new classifications, but they're performing the duties that are outlined in those classifications and not being paid appropriate. So we would ask that, whatever you do with respect to either party's position on wages going forward, that you also consider the appropriateness or consider the, making the employees, putting the employees in the appropriate classifications and, on, and at the police dispatch and at the, in the customer service representatives.
Mr. O'Connor, do we know what Mr. Myers' proposal would cost?
And then with respect to, one more thing, Mayor, before I get to, sorry.
Pardon me.
And the union's proposal also incorporates a shift differential increase for the technical and clerical unit. Currently, right now, what you have is you have the blue collar employees who receive a second shift differential, for example, of $1 an hour, while the clerical and technical for performing the same work only get 50 cents an hour. Third shift differential for the blue collar employees right now is $1.25 an hour, for example, and the clerical and technical, it's only $1 an hour. So we're looking for some parity between the, the employees that perform the same type of shift differential work between the clerical and technical and the blue collar unit.
And Jason, I think the mayor asked, do you, do we have in mind those financial impacts being proposed?
For which, which financial impact are you referring to?
Two, one by one. There are two of them, apparently.
The, well, you had the financial impact for the general wage increase. The financial impact for the addressing the dispatch employees, call-takers, customer service folks for this point forward is 9,400 plus 33,000, so about $43,000, $44,000.
And that's if they're paid based on the position they now hold, or is that status quo?
That, that would be putting them on the pay scale for the position that they hold.
Okay.
And the impact of the shift differential pay, do we know?
I do not have a estimation on the shift differential impact pay.
And it's not the city's, what's the city's position, Mr. O, Mr. Oldham, Mr. O'Connor, both?
Uh, the, the position was to leave the status quo on the, on the shift pay.
What about the other issue?
The moving the people on the matrix?
Yes.
Um, prior to, prior to coming here this morning, our position was not to, not to adjust the position pay because all, all step plans longevity had been frozen since 2009.
So we have three issues I think we can deal with. The first one, really, simply, which is that that pay increase be treated, I would make a motion that pay increase be treated the same as Mr. Fletcher, or I think it was Mr. Fletcher.
The 3%, uh...
Why didn't you make the motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to increase that to 3% as of paying forward.
I'll second.
With a re-opener?
With a re-opener at the, June, I think it was.
Mr. Kramer is seconded, so is there further discussion? Mr. Meyer, Mr. Oldham, Mr. O'Connor? Seeing no discussion, Mrs. Bach?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Pass this four to one.
What is the next issue, Mr. Mr.?
Probably the dispatch. I'm just calling generally the dispatch or call service individuals.
Personally, I'd rather take this up into the coming bargaining, but...
I think in a revision, in an overall review and revision of the step plan would be my recommendation as well, Mr. Mayor.
I don't have enough data here to understand. I heard the 9,400, I could, you know, that's one thing. I heard 43,000 there for something. That bothers me. We don't...
43 was the total. It was 9,000 in general fund, 33 to electric utility, combining to equal 43.
I'm not looking at enough stuff that I, I'd be with it frankly.
I don't feel comfortable doing that right now. I'd, I'd make a motion, leave it at status quo.
I'd second that motion.
Uh, Ms. Graves, though, for discussion?
If we, if we put that off in bargaining, then should we look at the shift differential to even it out across the board between blue collar and clerical?
That's the next issue.
But I'm just saying that if we're giving on one or taking on one, should we give on the other and keep that in consideration in this vote?
We're not taking anything. We're just waiting till a later date until we have some more information.
That's a useful discussion. Mr. Kramer?
Well, I think until you do have the useful information, and you don't, you don't give a yes or a no, we frankly don't have the information.
You've got to make a decision, yes or no, today.
You have to vote affirmatively or negatively on it. We're still going to be going into, this is part of the wage article, so we would be, based on the first motion, unless I'm wrong, that was passed, we would be reopening the wage article in June 2014, which all articles, all sub-articles within the wage would be open for negotiation. Do you agree?
Correct. That's where, that was my intent.
So do we have a motion, and do we understand it? Why don't you read it again, Ms. Bach?
Well, you already adopted the last motion.
But they made a new one.
Okay.
Um, the motion was to leave us status quo.
To what?
To remain at status, at status quo.
Until, I'd like to amend it so it says, at least it says June, so we don't look like we're just flat out saying no indefinitely.
I'll accept that amendment.
Can I make one suggestion? Sorry. I think maybe just a title of the amendment to the amendment, or the motion would be to, to leave the dispatch pay, customer service pay issue, you know, status quo until the article, wage article is reopened in June.
Sure. I'll accept.
Just so that it's, it's a...
Little clarification. Yeah, I'll accept that. Ms. Bach, did you pick that up?
I sure did.
I believe we have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Bach?
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Pass this five to zero.
So that brings us to the shift differential. I have no great insight on that. I would like to hear a discussion.
Once again, we're operating in a vacuum with no idea what the impact of the cost is going to be on this differential.
I have, I have that same problem, but I also believe thoroughly that someone that's doing the job deserves a pay. I would like to see that flattened out somehow for each one is paid appropriately.
Mr. Kramer?
Well, I, I think definitely you don't want to, if somebody's doing the same job at a different rate, that's, that's not fair.
That's just not acceptable.
Uh, yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see it equaled, equaled out.
I'm sorry, I'm not following. I thought the shift differential was for the different times that they come in, that we would change, change what they're paid? Okay, not that they're currently in a position they're not being paid for.
Mr. Oldham?
That was what we addressed just in that last motion, correct?
What you addressed in the last motion was the pay issue with respect to a very limited class of people. Well, I'm just calling loosely the dispatch folks, customer service representatives, call-takers, tho, those individuals. It's a small universe of people. It's an important issue, but a small universe of people. The shift differential would be unit-wide.
Across the board.
Okay.
Across the board.
It would be unit-wide, but as a general rule, the, there's very few people within the clerical, technical unit that are working shifts. Primarily, it's the dispatchers.
And I believe Mr. Meyer's position is that the shift differential rates in the clerical and technical unit would match those in the blue collar unit?
That's correct. Okay.
However, in the document that we've been given, on the clerical one, it still includes the 1.25 cents for weekend, for Saturday and Sunday, which was withdrawn earlier from the blue collar. Is that?
Well, they think it should be the same as in the blue collar, so I hate to play bingo with you, but you'd have to have both the blue collar one and the Teamster, or the CT one in front of you. So I think it'd be helpful if you went through, if you went through each one.
Okay, I just, for, for council to notice that, yeah, that it was still, it's still showing up in, in their books for clerical to technical.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Connor?
I, I believe Jason has presented our, our position and where we are today.
Could you restate that again?
It's really that we would hold status quo on that, and that's what we came into, into the area with. We do agree that if someone is working in a position and should be paid for that position, we have not, ours was against status quo in the recommendation.
Say that again.
Philosophically, we agree that if someone is working, for example, on the shift differential, there's probably, should be a pay differential on that. But our position was, coming into this discussion, was to hold the status quo. Now, what I think I'm hearing is that they would like, the union's position is, is they would like to keep it standard with the other unit. And Jason, I guess I would have to call on you to, is that where we are in this, that there's...
Jason, could you give us an example of the twos? Who would be, I mean, one, one...
Yeah, and I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Fletcher.
One, 911 call receiver, and then we'd have somebody taking calls for customer service. Is that the differential we're talking about?
No.
Two people, no?
No, sir. No, sir. The shift differential, and I want to go, I want to, I want you to have both of them in front of you, and we're going to go through them, sub A, B, C, D.
Good.
Because I don't want there to be any confusion what you're voting on. What you were talking about, Mr. Fletcher, the 911 dispatch, so forth, that's the, that's a, that's the differential. That's the one that you decided to reopen.
Reopen later, June.
And address that issue, city, and address that issue then.
Okay.
Shift differential will be somebody working, just to make this easy, the 7 to 3 shift versus the midnight 7 shift.
Okay, okay.
Differentials for that, okay? So let's, let's just, I want to make sure everybody's knows exactly what it is you're looking at and voting on. So if you get out the union proposal for each one, okay? And I'm looking at, for example, I'm looking at the technical and clerical unit one, and if you look at shift differential, it's 20.02, okay? And if you look at the blue collar one, that article is, I believe it's called 20.04 shift differential. You see that there? Starts at the bottom. Then there's an A, B, C, D.
And unfortunately, I think we have two Bs on ours, Jason.
Yeah.
There is. The union's proposal has two Bs.
The second B should be the C.
We figured you'd write that in. It's a C. So...
We drew that to be A.
All right. So the union's proposal is that the clerical and technical unit shift differential adjustments would be the same as they are in the blue collar unit. Okay, now as you'll see, a couple of the clerical and technical will go up, but one will actually go down. Okay? So let's just look at them on a period so you can see. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Now, shouldn't we be looking at the city's one? Because the city one was held status quo, and the, the union's proposal one in the blue collar was withdrawn. So we're looking to amend the technical and clerical ones to the current blue collar that is our city's current status, correct?
Right. But I mean, it's, ours redlined it, so what you see in ours is the existing language.
Okay.
So second shift, okay, that's the first one, A, is employees working second shift evening. The blue collar is $1. So this should maybe even be separated out, 1, 2, 3. So blue collar, second shift is $1 an hour, okay? The clerical and technical second shift is currently 50 cents. So you would be moving the clerical and technical from 50 cents to $1, okay? All right. The next one is third shift, midnight, okay? The blue collar midnight is 1.25. So blue collar, third shift, midnight, 1.25. The clerical and technical is $1. So you would be moving the clerical and technical third shift midnight from $1 to 1.25, okay? The last one is weekends, Saturday, Sunday, the weekend shift. Okay, blue collar is currently 85 cents. Clerical and technical is actually a dollar. So you would be voting to lower the clerical and technical from $1 to 85 cents.
Yeah.
For weekend duty, okay?
Mr. Meyer, what's your comment?
That's what the union's modified proposal was today, sir, was to do exactly that for parity between both units. So it's, although it's, it's reducing it 15 cents on the, for the weekend, the, obviously the advantage for us is it's going up 50 cents on the second shift and 25 cents on the third.
And from management position, we don't have any problem with that. I think the number would be relatively small.
Oh, I have trouble not having parity, frankly.
I do, too. I have real trouble not having parity on the differential. I'd make a motion to revise the current rates to those that Jason had just mentioned. The blue collar from $1, the technical, excuse me, the technical or clerical from 50 cents to $1 to match the blue collar. To bring the techno-clerical up to 1.25 for the second shift.
Third shift.
Third shift, rather. And for weekends, to change the techno-clerical to 85 cents.
I'll second.
Further discussion? No further discussion. Ms. Bach, call a roll, please.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Thank you. Pass this five to zero.
Does this resolve the wage issues? Are there further elements? Go ahead, Mr. Meyer. You have the floor.
Well, what, what the union has to do now, sir, is to take back all of our tentative agreements that we have and the impasse issues that you voted upon today. Those go into an agreement. Both units have to, have to vote on those. So if, if, if the, if both units ratify, that becomes the collective bargaining agreement. You're going to bring it back to them probably for ratification after that. If it's, if, and that would be the contract for two years. If it's, if it's... If it's not ratified by the borrowing units, then what you voted on today still makes it into the contract, and the other tentative agreements fall by the wayside. So that's kind of just the way it works.
Mr. O'Connor?
I believe Steve has summed it up pretty well. That's exactly where we are in today's world. I presume that if the contracts are voted down, we'll probably start before June the 1st in our negotiations.
Well, I hope not, because it's been arduous. I hope not.
Thank you, Jason, for your work. Thank you both.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question, I'm just starting before we depart? I guess I still had a question, just trying to understand the insurance, the revised insurance clause. I know that we were trying to eliminate the high plan, and I'm looking at the agreement, and now we have a base plan and a middle plan, but we're paying, the city's paying the same percentage for the base plan and the middle plans. So I'm perplexed as to what we're, I thought we were trying to get to one plan and...
Well, no, we were looking to eliminate the high plan, and that will go away in October 2014. The, so the status quo would be for the rest of the fiscal year. October 1, 2014, the city would continue to pay 100% of the base plan for employee only, and then they pay 75% for employee spouse, children, for the middle plan. The city would pay only based on the base plan. So 75% of the base plan cost, and then employee pays the difference.
I guess that's not what I'm reading here, because it's just showing middle plan and it has employees, 100% of base, okay, thank you. Now I understand. I missed the base word.
Yes.
Thank you.
Also, just for clarification, unless there's objections from the council, we plan to provide for these same raises that you did for those clerical and also for other people who are not necessarily represented, but it'd be uniform across the board. That does not affect anyone, 70,000 and above, yes.
Unrepresented personnel.
Do that affect?
Pardon me?
Do you need a resolution, or are you?
No, sir. Your agreement will make those adjustments.
I'd rather blame the city manager.
All right. No one's seen, no objection.
Thank you, Mr. Odom and Mr. Myers, appreciate it.
We have three more things to do. I think they're hopefully all briefed. The next one is the legal notice that Mrs. Turner wanted to take a look at. This was drafted, Wayne, by yourself and whomever. Do you want to have any comment?
No, I just, I consulted with Chef Wright, who's our PSC lawyer in Tallahassee, and then also with Ryan Matthews at League of Cities, and we came to this conclusion, language in front of you.
We've already authorized it, but if there's concern with it, this is the time to bring it up.
I make a motion that we approve it as written, and we go ahead and file it.
But it would be published, Tammy would publish it in the legal notices in the TC Palm. And what I'd ask is, if you look at my memo, was proposing that, under a letter from the mayor, be sent to the appropriate, and Ryan Matthews at League of Cities would help us to send it to the appropriate legislators in Tallahassee.
I think procedurally, what we should do is, I'll second Mrs. Graves' motion if that need happen. I will draft by tomorrow a very brief letter, which I'll bring forward next Tuesday to be sure that it's acceptable.
Well, my concern is the legislative session begins Tuesday in Tallahassee, March 4th, and we've already delayed it by a week by proofreading this. I feel if we delay it anymore, we're hurting our chances.
If you want, if the sense of the council is to draft a letter and call it to attention, I will do that.
I trust your writing ability.
I trust your writing ability.
Let me just throw this out here. This does have to do with the notice, this notice was for the local bills that have not been filed yet. The deadline for the filing of those is March 4th at noon, so they may not even be filed till March 4th. And the other question was, when would you prefer to have it published? If you want the broadest circulation, you're probably going to look at the Sunday newspaper for press drill, I would think.
Yeah, they don't publish legal notices on Sundays, so we'd have to get it in Saturday.
Oh, okay.
That answers that question.
Mr. Herr, and just for full, I guess, full disclosure, discuss item, I think, yeah, the council agreed that we did not, we certainly did not have a council vote or approve this legislation going forward. But I'm still struggling a little bit with the language in here that says that we disavow any knowledge of. And clearly, with the Indian River County Legislative Delegation meeting, there is utility local bill and a territorial review local bill. This was advertised, open to the public. I know, I attended the first parts of the session, I believe the mayor did as well, so whether we did, we certainly didn't see, have the opportunity to see or read this bill beforehand, at least there was some knowledge, and I think just having that language in there, you know, is not completely true.
Well, and the other side of that is that if you read strictly page three and four of the legislature's rules, although they're not rules, it has to be advertised and brought forward as an item of itself. I don't think anyone, I was sitting in the front row that particular day, anyone understood that this was going to be a debate. There was at least 50 topics during the day. I would not, I would let the advertisement go as it is, and as far as making an issue, I would merely send the advertisement to the proper people, not make a cause celebre out of it. I don't think we need to do that. I don't agree with what's in the paper this morning, but that's neither here nor there. The prime thing is, we never did consent to it, so I think it stands as it is. But I don't think we should escalate it in any way, I just really don't. So if that's the sense of the council, we'll move forward. I'll have a two-sentence letter, I'm sure. Wayne and I will. Okay, that will bring us to the next item.
We need to vote on that?
Oh, you want, okay, there's a motion and a second. Mrs. Spock, or is it voice?
I'll call the roll. Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes four to one.
Okay, we move to item four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vero Beach floor implements the organization and membership of the Utility Commission of the City of Vero Beach for consistency with the code of the City of Vero Beach, as amended by ordinance number 2014, terminating the term of office of current commission members, except for the town of Indian River Shores representative, providing for an appointment of commission members and their respective terms of office, providing for conflict and severability. And I believe the author of this is you, Wayne, is it not?
Yes, this is just to implement the change that you made to that section of the code regarding the Utilities Commission, and I believe Tammy has advised that you have, I believe, all selected an appointee.
Yes.
So the only effect of this is, it's a legal amendment, as I understand it, that we disband one commission before we, the first meeting of the new commission.
On adoption, this disbands the former organization of the Utilities Commission, implements the ordinance, and would take effect immediately with the new members you appoint today. And of course, there is an at-large member, the Indian River Shores member stays as is unless the town council decides to change. And it now makes the, and of course, you still have two alternates that you would need to appoint at some point in time.
All right, with that said, is there a council comment?
Just a question. Ms. Spock, do we have any candidates for the at-large and the alternate positions to?
I did receive one application in a couple days ago, so that is the only application that I have for this commission. I can do some advertising, so we can get some more applications in.
Thank you, and it also requests of council that bankie letters be sent to all members that have served on this commission, given their time and effort.
We will make sure that's done.
Any comment by the public on this matter? Seeing none, we need a voice vote on this?
Motion to accept resolution.
I'll second it. How do we vote?
The roll call.
Roll call? Mrs. Spock?
Mr. Fletcher?
No.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Yes.
Mayor Winger?
Yes.
Passes three to two.
Before going to general public comment, which is called on this, under the sunshine law, I would like to make a few comments, so that the city council is fully apprised of anything that I've done or no. For the past three weeks, and I believe three weeks is accurate, I've taken part in the weekly, although one week we didn't do it, meetings with Florida Power and Light over the phone, and I've actually met with them here in this building twice. The reason for that was, as much as possible, to move the train forward, to move the train forward. I'm dedicated to getting a resolution to this this year. Yesterday, the city manager and the transactional attorney and I, with the concurrence of Florida Power and Light, visited their office in Juneau Beach, and we met with six of their people, the most senior being Sam Forrest, who's the vice president. Before we met with them, we met with the transactional attorney, who has accompanied us, and all we have done is, accompanied by lawyers. But our transactional attorney had in his possession a letter from Florida Power and Light to FMPA, which we believe will be sent tomorrow, today or tomorrow, by the chairman or the chief operating officer of Florida Power and Light. And we had a chance to read the letter, and we had a chance to talk about it with Florida Power and Light. The letter merely reaffirms the $52 million number, and very little more than that. I didn't see anything in it that was really debatable. We had, the meeting yesterday probably took an hour or more, and I invited Mrs. Amy Brundage, Mrs. Brundage, to come forth at the next city council meeting and present to this city council what the specific offer is so that we can fully understand it. And I also told her that as a result of that, that I would be asking the city council's permission to forward this matter respectively to each of the Finance and Utilities Commission for their best judgment on what is being talked about. We do not have any numbers of the consequence of the portion of the rates that the public would be asked to pay. They weren't prepared to have those. We're informed that we, council may be informed this week or Monday, but they will be presented to city council next Tuesday. In other words, what will the rate reduction be and over what period of time? We do not know that. So the train is moving forward. I'm a little disappointed how it's moving forward, but it's moving forward, and I think we've been committed as a council to see that happens. I personally believe that this issue should be resolved this year. We've been through enough of this, and we have quite a bit of the year left, one way or another. And I've talked to Wayne, and Wayne and Jim and I have had several conversations about it over the last three weeks at least, possibly longer. And, you know, it's Wayne's belief and recommendation that the public have a referendum and be the final decider, and of course, that would be based upon a definitive contract. I don't know that I'd classify it as a new contract or a revision. That's all I know at this point in time. I mean, the discussion, I think, was useful, but one other thing came up, and, you know, one of the things that Jim and I said to them, and I'm going to let Jim comment to the degree, be sure that he concurs, because the two of us who were there were the transactional attorney, we asked them to visit FMPA as soon as possible, because, you know, there are contingencies and details, and as they say, the devil's in the details, and they agreed that that was necessary. Interesting thing came up, and they asked if the city manager, myself, and attorney would be willing to talk to FMPA, if FMPA wanted to talk to us prior to them meeting. And our position was that anything we could do to facilitate a conversation in the interest of the public, we would be willing to do. I'm not willing to do that if city council objects, but I think it's relatively, relatively a harmless thing. I think we have to do what we have to do to get to an end point by the end of this year, so. That's all I have to say, but under the sunshine law, there is nothing else. I have no notes. There is no communication. We do not have possession of the letter, but I believe as soon as FMPA has the letter, that it will probably go public from there.
If I might question to the city manager and to Mr. Comment, do you see any change to the purchase-sale agreement because of this?
I think the contract.
The one we signed six months ago?
Under the terms and conditions that we're discussing now, there is going to be substantial change to the power, the contract, the sales agreement. So I think it will be, because it actually changes some of the fundamental business concepts. One of the most important business concept is that sharing of a cost, because our position was, we would not have impacts on our ratepayers. This obviously would be something that would be taken under consideration, be a part of that contract.
I knew the answer, I just wanted to make sure everybody all were on the same page.
So that is pretty substantial. I would like to request that the council, if you have objections to the mayor going, please just voice them. Let's don't point the committee where I have to take Tammy to a meeting. And, but if there are objections, I think that's what the mayor and I would like to hear. The next thing is, is when the presentation is made on the 4th of March, the council as a group need to be prepared to make a recommendation to FPNL, either to go forward under the concept, not saying that we've agreed to the concept, and whether, we don't even have the numbers, so we can't really say that, but that they can go and start talking to FMPA in order to keep this, as the mayor says, the train moving forward. But FPNL cannot make steps forward without us concurring with at least the concept of what they're doing. The other is, is I have no problem, and I believe that from our transactional attorneys being at those meetings when they take place, that we could do that again, and we've been at most of those meetings.
Well, I agree, the mayor should attend.
And I would also offer my support to whatever we can do to continue the dialogue, getting this information out, finalizing it for the public, that, yeah, I certainly would support the mayor being involved. Thank you.
Mr. Kramer, your thoughts?
Well, just as a question, has FPNL agreed that if they can't close this thing by January 1st, that they're done?
No, sir, they have not agreed to that.
Okay, so if this, if this fails, then we're still on the hook for December 31st, 2016?
Oh, no, sir, your new contract, if you have a referendum, it'll be under a new contract with terms and conditions. Now, you could put that in there if you wish to do so.
Well, we're all agreeing here that we want to get this thing done by this year, but I think, you know, FPNL told us that we'd already be receiving FPNL bills when we started this. I'd like to see something in the contract that says, if you can't close on January 1st, 2015, you're done.
The council obviously has the input into that contract, and that is thoroughly understood by all parties.
I don't want to see a drop-dead date. I mean, we all have targets, but I don't want to see a drop-dead date.
The problem is, FPNL is no longer the lowest bill in the state. I mean, what the heck are you doing this for? If, you know, in my category, I'm going to get, what, seventh or eighth place?
They're a lot lower than what we have now.
Well, it's because you haven't looked at the options, and you don't want to look at the options. You know, Lake Worth's at 105 because they said no to FPNL. They are.
Ms. Graves?
I think it's hard to have a position when, right now, there's just theories being batted around.
Yep.
I think until there's actual numbers that show what can happen and what the impact is, you can't really take a position. So, I mean, I think even asking for some sort of recommendation when we don't have numbers is slightly premature.
And I agree with that. I think you definitely have to have the numbers before you make a recommendation. The concept, I guess, that we, if you all see fit on the 4th, the concept would be something we don't have objections to. But you could have objections if the numbers don't, for example, if the rates don't change, then obviously, we would have issues with that.
All right, are there other, is there public comment in general that is on the agenda? Mr. Gorey?
Peter Gorey, chairman of the Finance Commission and live at 10 Segal Avenue in City of Vero Beach. I'm here to talk about the last council meeting, both the Finance and Utility Commissions. Were asked to review Mr. Kramer's proposal. What, what I would recommend is that there be a joint meeting of the utility and finance when, when the, when the new constituted utility committee. I have contacted our financial advisor, I've talked to Mr. Kramer, I've talked to Mr. O'Connor, and I've talked to Cindy Lawson, in terms of putting that together, so we hear the same story, rather than having to have a consecutive things where you get into a ping pong. So the bottom line would be, when appointed, then whomever is going to be the chairman. Now, I have talked to Scott Stradly, but you, you had a vote today. But in any event, I would propose that the, myself and the chairperson of the Utilities Commission would meet prior to get some of the specifics that we could then forward to each of the commission members for review, and then have our meeting make recommendations to council.
I have, I have two questions. One, Mrs. Vok, when would a Utilities Commission, since we now need their consultation on two issues for the public? What Mr. Gorey is talking about is looking at the financing of the electric utility with the idea that the financing can be improved, and therefore we can have a reduction rate. It wouldn't be a large one, but any reduction is appreciated. So I guess my question is, you know, when will we have a Utilities Commission in place?
Well, their first meeting would need to be their organizational meeting, and that mean they'd be sworn in, and they'd elect their chair and vice chair. I do have the one application that I plan to present to council at your meeting on Tuesday. And if you do decide to appoint that person, then we would have enough members on the board to go ahead and have their first meeting. Wouldn't have the two alternates yet, but we could still get some applications in for that, and that could always come back. So after their organizational meeting, and they elect a chair and a vice chair, then the chair could meet with Mr. Gorey, and then we could have the joint meeting after that.
It's probably the week after next, isn't it?
So, yeah, if I can get a quorum and everyone together, probably look in about two, two and a half weeks.
Progress. Thank you, Mr. Gorey.
Thank you very much.
Herb Whittle, 19th Park Avenue, Vero Beach. As a member of the public, I would like to push that, yeah, Dick Warner goes to those meetings, because anything we can get to get more information than what we're getting today would be helpful, and anything to push it down the road and get it done, I agree with, just as a member of the public. Thank you.
Any further comment, Mrs. Turner?
No, sir. We adjourned.
Any further business?
Motion to adjourn?
I have a second.
Second.
We adjourn, we beat noon.